By 5:00 PM on the Monday prior to the meeting and they'll be read into the record. And then also, just so everybody knows, we always do roll call votes because we're doing Zoom meetings. So because not everybody can see us, so that way everybody can verify who voted for what. So that's why we put you through that pain with every vote. And with that said, we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance and maybe we can get Gar House to lead us in the place.
Thank you. It'd be my pleasure. Everybody, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
The United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Gar. All right, next we'll move on to the approval of the agenda. City manager, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not, thank you.
Okay.
New moves for approval.
Lauren will second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember New and a second by Councilmember Lauren. Shelley, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Councilmember Lauren.
Hi.
Councilmember New.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Biase.
Hi.
Mayor Cowan.
Hi. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now we'll move on to council comments. Councilmember Lauren.
Oh, sure. December 8th, I attended the YSGA Ad hoc Drought Continency Planning Committee. We didn't do a rain dance, but here we are. On December 11th, I attended the really fun holiday fair downtown and spent way too much money on cool presents. It was a delightful time. On December 13th, I attended the SAC Valley Division League of California Cities meeting, the last SAC Valley Division meeting of the year. Also attended the Yellow County Transportation District Board Meeting. We had a closed session also and exciting things are happening in transportation. On December 15th, there was a WRA YSGA, that's groundwater, Executive Committee meeting. And it was followed by the Winters Joint Unified School District, two by two later in the day with Mayor Pro Tim Biase and City Manager Treppa in attendance. I also today met with the city manager to review tonight's agenda and had a couple email conversations with constituents. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
This is Mayor. LCC Zoom meeting. And on the 20th Zoom meeting with City Manager Kathleen Trevor for gender review for tonight's meeting. That's, that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Biase.
Thank you, Mayor.
So I'm sorry, out of order here. Councilmember New.
I would have, I would have waited, you know. On Wednesday, the 8th of December, went to the city luncheon. It was great, great food and great entertainment. On, then I went, I think it was the 11th, but I'm sure the crafts fair. On 12/10, I attended the SAICOG discussion, a Zoom discussion about social equity. And and on the 13th, had a meeting with Valerie Whitworth about the Harcourt or the Paseo. And also a couple emails about that back and forth. On Wednesday, the 15th, Yolo County House meeting. On the 16th, Yolo SAICOG meeting, these meetings are Zoom and mostly about trails and active transportation. Trying to develop maps that will allow all the county to get from one location to another by trails rather than in a car or bus, whatever. And on Monday, I attended, I zoomed with our city manager Kathleen Treppa about tonight's meeting and that's it.
Hey, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Biase.
Thank you, Mayor. On December 10th, I attended the Chamber of Board meeting. On December 15th, the city school district, two by two, along with Councilmember Lauren and City Manager Treppa. On the 16th, I attended the city management staff meeting. On the 17th, the holiday gathering of the city employees at the public safety facility. On December 20th, I went to, I met with the city manager Treppa for the gender review. And later that evening, I sat in on the natural resource committee meeting. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. As for myself, I was out of town for 10 days of the, since the last meeting. So I just have a, I had a meeting with Valerie Whitworth and Tina about the Paseo Park. And then earlier today, a call with the city manager to be updated and reviewed tonight's agenda. So thank you, everybody, for all your work on all the outside assignments. And now we'll move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council on matters which are not listed on the agenda tonight. And for agendized items, it's better if you wait until we call on that item. And that's about it. Do we have any public comment, Shelley?
Yes, Monty 2020.
Okay, Monty 2020, and then I saw Gar House's hand go up, so.
There it is. The next one, the hand? There it is. No, well, yes, I want to speak, sorry.
Okay, I think we had, you said Monty 2020?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay. Monty, you're on mute.
I believe that from, was Annette Montgomery from, she spoke at the last meeting.
Okay.
It took me a minute to figure that out.
Okay.
Good evening. This is Annette Montgomery. Wanted to thank you for noting my comments from the last meeting. But wish to clarify an objective. To request the city manager, mayors, city council members to take up on a following agenda item under transportation. West Main Street Traffic and Safety Concerns Recommendations or Implementation. Also, please include under the public comments for the minutes, also reference my email to you as a group, was dated December 2nd, 2021. Regarding the West Main Street Traffic and Safety Concerns Recommendations. The objective of adding an agenda items is for the city of Winters to implement traffic calming plan solutions. I'm hoping you'll join us in our partnership with the citizens to promote safety with a traffic calming plan solution. If you have, do you have any questions? Otherwise, I bid you all a good evening.
Okay, thank you, Annette. All right, next, Gar House.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for this opportunity. I'll be very brief, but it's very, I would just like to give a big shout out and recognize our very, very fine city manager Kathleen Treppa. She did some amazing things this year. Mostly, I would say, she's become the miracle worker and a magician for the city. Because what she did is she resurrected the wonderful and successful tractor parade. And I can't say enough about that. So great. And as president of Rotary, the Winters Rotary Club, I would like to give her an award, a special Oscar for best performance in a amazing public feat. She's done much more than that, but that, that one really stands out in my mind and she really deserves a lot of praise. So Kathleen, you weren't there at the Rotary party to receive it. So here it is now to, I'll get a tear eventually. She's very, she's a hardworking woman, dedicated and engaged in the community. We can't say, I'm really pleased that she's here and working for us. And I, and also just, I know that it's not just her, that many people in the city, congratulations to all of you, the whole staff, all of you, the city council, for what you did to make that a unique and amazing experience. It really put us on the map. I, I heard that there were 14,000 people. Is that true? Did anybody get that figure correct? That's a lot of people.
We have an unofficial estimate of 10 to 12,000.
That's amazing. It's just incredible. And without incident, went really well. Incredible. So I, I'd just like to say congratulate all of you. And let's just, I just want to end by saying, I wish everybody in the city council, the staff and all of our community, happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much, Gar. I think Valerie Whitworth had her hand up. Go ahead, Valerie.
I'm Valerie Whitworth residing at 108 Leeway Village Court in Winters. But before I begin, I want to say how much I love the community of Winters and that I fully support the hard work of the city manager and the council. We've had a great citizen support for the grant with it I'm working on, which is a grant requirement. And over 150 people have provided input. I'm hearing a lot of misinformation pertaining to the grant, so I decided to present tonight so that we could all be on the same page. Here are some things to know about the California State Parks Grant. This grant is one-time money only this year. We are applying for 300,000 and we've been working on it for six months. Money like this to support arts and parks is rare. The grant is 99% complete, except for signatures, a timeline and a proof of city capacity to manage the park we are ready to submit. The city and the citizens have nothing to lose by submitting the grant. The grant does not require full plans in order to be submitted, only a vision. The grant requires one person authorized by the council to sign the various documents provided within the grant. This could be any city staff or citizen. The city council must authorize the person, however. The council can reject the money if it is rewarded. There's no obligation to accept the grant. The grant is due January 20th, two days after the next council meeting. So everything must be finished and signed by that meeting on January 18th. Options that the council might consider is not submitting the grant. This would require the city provide an additional 200,000 to finish the park or a private fundraising campaign to gain the additional 200,000. You could also sell the vacant lot back to the Winters Participation Gallery. An offer is possible. Possibly more suitable options would be authorizing a council member, a city staff member or grants writer to sign the documents. Authorizing the city manager to sign the documents is also an alternative. However, she has stated clearly that she does not have the time. In my opinion, this should be the last option to consider in order not to overburden the city manager. She's doing a superb job and I don't want her to burn out. Thank you so much for your attention and time. Happy holidays to you all.
Thank you, Valerie. And this is on our agenda on the consent calendar for tonight about the repurposing of the Community Design Grant and also moving forward with, with the grant that you've been working on. So thank you for those comments. Shelley, do we have any other public comment?
I have no other raised hands at this time.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to the consent calendar. City manager Treppa?
Yes, thank you very much. We have a number of items on the consent calendar. Item A are the minutes from the regular meeting of December 7th. Item B is Resolution 2021-85, authorizing the city manager to sign a facility use license agreement with Pacific Gas and Electric. And this would to, this would be to move the Community Resource Center from the public safety facility to the large conference room at City Hall. Item C is Resolution Number 2021-86, related to our continued virtual meetings under AB 361. Item D is Resolution 2021-87, adopting a new classification, the executive assistant slash deputy city clerk and amending the salary schedule for this fiscal year by adding that new classification on to the salary schedule. There is no financial impact. It's the same salary. Item E is Resolution Number 2021-88, awarding a professional services agreement to Peckham and McKinney for executive recruiting services for the Director of Administrative Services position in the amount of $26,000. Item F is Resolution Number 2021-91, appointing the city manager as city clerk since our administrative services director is leaving for retirement. Item G is Ordinance 2021-05, changing the city of Winters general municipal election from the statewide direct primary date to the statewide general election date, i.e. November of 2022. This is second reading and final adoption. Item H is Ordinance Number 2021-06, amending section 2.04.150 of chapter 2.04 of Title II of the Winters Municipal Code, increasing the compensation of city council members from 150 to $300 per month, which would take effect after the next general election, November 2022. Item I is the 2022 calendar, the holiday and city hall closure schedule, which would include closing city hall during the, from Christmas Eve to the 3rd of January, that Monday, and authorizing the ongoing 980 schedule for city hall. Item J is Resolution 2021-89, receiving and filing fiscal year 2020 slash 2021 impact fee report in a five-year report and making certain findings as required by the California Government Code, Section 66000. And then item K is repurposing a $100,000 Community Design Grant from the Sacramento Area Council of Governments to support the development of the Paseo Park Project, which would be in concert with a rural recreation grant that Valerie Whitworth just spoke about, should that grant also be approved. And those are the items on the consent calendar.
Okay, thank you. Is there any council comments or concerns about the consent calendar? Mayor Pro Tim Biase.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would just want to make a correction to the minutes. Just for our discussion item, I think it was item B from the last meeting. It was, let me see if I can find it. Where the motion was, says motion by Councilmember Lauren Biase. I should say, motion by Councilmember Lauren. And then later in the sentence, it's seconded by Councilmember Biase. That correction to the minutes. And the other item I would like to request that item H be moved from consent to a discussion item, whether it's at the beginning of discussion or at the ends up to the mayor's discretion.
Sure, we can do that. If we'd like to discuss that further, so we'll move item H to discussion item and make that amendment to the minutes. Is there any other comment on the consent calendar from the council? If not, is there any public comment on the consent calendar before we move to a motion?
I see no hands raised.
Okay, and there's no written comment?
I've received none.
Okay. All right, thank you. Then we'll entertain a motion with those two changes to the consent calendar.
I will move that item.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember Lauren and I believe we have a second by Councilmember New. He was trying to unmute himself. Shelley, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anderson.
You're muted.
There you go.
Councilmember Lauren.
Hi.
Councilmember New.
We lost Pierre.
There he goes.
I'm, I'm here. I, I, I.
Mayor Pro Tim Biase.
Hi.
And Mayor Cowan.
Okay, motion, yes. Motion carries unanimously with the two stated changes. So we have no presentations tonight, so we'll move on to discussion items. And the first item A is SB 1383, the mandate from the state for the edible food recovery program. Will this be the city manager leading off?
Yes, I will. I'll, I'll lead off the presentation and let me share my screen if you don't mind. Let me make sure I can do this properly. Okay, can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay, great. And hopefully without all the notes on the side. So yes, I'll, I'll lead off this conversation. I would like to recognize our environmental services manager Christine DeGirre. She's worked very hard on this as has our Assistant City Attorney Joanna Jen. We've heard a little bit about SB 1383. It was initially adopted and passed and signed into law by the governor back in 2016. And the regulations only became final this last, in 2020, the fall of 2020. And so we've all been working hard on figuring out how we're actually going to comply with what is probably one of the most sweeping changes to our solid waste diversion program since, since 1989, when we were originally mandated to divert solid waste from our landfills for a wide array of reasons. And so tonight's topic is really about the edible food recovery program and what the requirements say and how we are proposing that council, that the city of Winters comply with this, this mandate. So, related to edible food recovery, SB 1383 has several requirements. A, we're obligated to estimate the amount of edible food that will be disposed by a commercial edible food generator. And for the city of Winters, we have two tier one generators. We're obligated to identify existing capacity at food recovery organizations. There are none that exist within the city of Winters. We are mandated to identify proposed new or expanded food recovery organization and services that are necessary to recover that edible food that is estimated to be disposed by commercial edible food generators. So in order to comply with this capacity study, we decided to partner with the city of Woodland and Yolo County with a joint consulting agreement with TCM. And they actually completed the edible food recovery capacity study. And so as part of that, they were required to consult with food recovery organizations regarding their existing capacity or any additional capacity that they might need. They worked with all the generators that were identified countywide to assess how much edible food might be recovered countywide. And then they spend a comprehensive amount of time trying to work with these food recovery organizations to better understand what support they would need to ramp up and expand their capacity to receive the additional edible food that might be recovered as a result of this, the mandated diversion program. And so as I mentioned, there is not a food recovery organization or a food pantry here in town. Staff has reached out to Rise. They do have a food pantry in Espardo. And Rise does have a facility here in Winters. And so we've been engaged in some conversation about the possibility of Rise expanding their operation here in Winters to include food distribution to local community residents. Part of what SB 3, SB 1383 requires is that if new or expanded capacity is needed to recover the additional edible food that is identified as part of this capacity study, that each jurisdiction within the county that lacks capacity shall, quote unquote, submit an implementation schedule to demonstrate how we will ensure that there is enough new or expanded capacity to recover this edible food that is currently being landfilled. And we also are required to fund that edible food recovery infrastructure to financially support the expansion of edible food recovery capacity. So what exactly does that mean? So TCM looked at every, at all of the food generators in the county. And that includes large supermarkets. It includes food distributors. It could be processors or manufacturers of food. And as I mentioned, we have two tier one generators in Winters. And that includes Lorenzo Supermarket and Mariani Nut, the processing facility. And so those are our two tier two generators, although there are a number of generators located in the county in various jurisdictions. So we are obligated to identify how much waste they are producing and that is getting landfilled and what, how much of it could be diverted to food pantries or the food bank or these food recovery organizations. Then on the other side of the equation, TCM went out to these food recovery organizations to assess how much capacity they had and how much capacity they would need in order to receive this extra food and what it would take to have, help them ramp up to accept this extra food. And over the course of this regional approach, the consulting group identified that approximately $761,700 would be necessary to help these food recovery organizations ramp up to expand their capacity in order to receive this extra edible food that would now be diverted from the supermarkets and these generators and not get landfilled. And that, that financial support would be used to buy trucks, to buy refrigerators, to buy software programs, scales, all the tracking that is necessary and associated with helping to report to the state of California how we are assisting the diversion of edible food out of the landfills. Because when it decomposes, it produces methane gas. The base impetus for these programs are A, climate change, reduce methane gas, which contributes to climate change, and B, capture food that is otherwise being thrown out and diverted to people in need who are food insecure. And so the goals are good. It's the implementation that has created the potential for some pretty significant financial impacts. And this is just one program. So the $762,000 rounded up. If all of the cities were to participate in a regional program, which is the proposal tonight, each of the cities would pay their fair share of this $762,000 based on the number of tier one generators that are within their jurisdiction. So the county has one tier one generator. The city of Winters has two tier one generators. So the county contribution to a regional network would be 17,000. Our contribution to a regional network would be $34,600. And you can see on this chart that, let's see, Davis is red, there are 156,000. Woodland's contribution would be $277,000. And then West Sacramento would also be $277,000. And so basically tonight, what we're proposing is, is rather than independently trying to satisfy this program, these new mandates on our own, is that we partner with our Yolo County cities and the county to create a regional edible food recovery network, which would include helping to divert food collectively around the county from these tier one generators and get it to these food recovery organizations who in turn would distribute it out to people in need. Now, of the food recovery organizations that were evaluated, there are nine that meet the Department of Environmental Health standards for food handling. The Yolo Food Bank is clearly the largest. That's one of the nine. And then there are eight other smaller programs that exist throughout the county. And again, we do not have one here in Winters. And so the idea is, is to pool all of this money that would be centrally managed and coordinated by the, by Yolo County. And that as these food recovery entities needed funding to buy their refrigerators, buy their trucks, buy the scales and in order to receive this extra food, they would apply in the county, working in coordination with the staff in whichever jurisdiction that generator. on whichever jurisdiction that generator is located or that food recovery organization is located. They would apply for funding through this pool of money that's about 700, I think it's $62,000. So it's a regional approach to creating a network and it's a regional. So as an example, let's say Rise wanted to create a food pantry in, in winters and they needed financial support to be able to do so. Let's say hypothetically, they needed $40,000 for additional space. They needed refrigerators and they needed some other equipment. And all of that totaled $40,000. Even though our contribution would be $34,000, they could apply for the $40,000 to help fund their expansion to provide a new food pantry within the city of winters. And we would work with the county in terms of processing that application. So in terms of the actual cost to the city, these are all clearly estimates. Based on the two tier one generators we have in town, our contribution would be, the, would be 34, approximately $34,000. The Yolo County staff are applying for a grant of $250,000 that would be contributed towards the overall total that the consultant has estimated. Once that is applied, our contribution would go down to $26,000. Cow Recycle is considering a, a grant of $20,000 per agency, regardless of size, to help get this program launched statewide. So if they create that $20,000 grant with a simple application and we apply, that 20,000 would be applied towards our 26,000 obligation. So our first year costs could be as low as $6,000. It remains to be seen whether the county is successful in the $250,000 grant. And then we would still need to apply for that $20,000 grant. That's just the first year. The highest costs are associated with helping these food recovery organizations and the tier one generators come into compliance. And so these are just estimates. The expectation is, is once an organization has ramped up to be able to accept this additional capacity, ongoing costs would go down because they have already built up that capacity. A comment about the food recovery organizations. So nine are certified as meeting health department standards. The food bank being one. However, the food bank believes that it needs more money than was identified in the, and I don't think we have it in the slide, that was identified in the capacity study. They feel that they are, they're out of capacity now. And by their estimate, they feel that they need far more additional capacity than the consultant identified. So the food bank has chosen, after this report was completed, the food bank decided to not participate in the regional network. That's not to say that they're not providing services because they are the largest distributor of edible food throughout the county. So they will have a very, very important role and continue to have a very important role in the, in food distribution. However, they would not be part of this network. And the money that was earmarked for the food bank would be reallocated to the other remaining eight food recovery organizations that are spread throughout the county to help them build up that much more capacity to be able to take some of this edible food that's been identified. So tonight, what we're asking for is council consideration of the report that was attached to the staff report. And that would be accepting the report. We're asking for council consideration and approval in concept of a regional approach to the edible food recovery program with the estimated costs as they've been presented. And if council supports a regional program, we will bring back a memorandum of understanding that the county would prepare where the city and the county would enter into this agreement as the other cities have indicated they will do, so that we can then move forward with, with creating a regional network. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions. I know Joanna is on the call, as is Christine, and both of them have spent a considerable amount of time this last year trying to get up to speed on the SB 1383 requirements. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for that report. All right, any council comments on this item? Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, city manager, I just have a couple of questions, maybe some clarification. I think you mentioned it's Woodland, winters and the county were the three that participated in the survey that TCM did, is that correct?
They participated in the contract. One of the other cities used their own staff resources to be able to do their capacity study. And then the other city chose a different consultant, but all, we've pulled all the information together and all of the cities are considering a regional approach.
So the 34,000 and change amount that is suggested as the contribution from winters, I believe that was calculated based on population, is that right?
It's based on the number of tier one generators in each jurisdiction. So we have two and the county has one. And then the other cities have however many they have in theirs.
And I think in a discussion you and I had, I think you had told me that Mariani's, being one of those, they already have a recovery plan in place?
Mariani's does. So they, they contribute whatever edible food is left over from their processing. They already send that off to the food bank. And then Lorenzo's has had a spotty relationship with some different food pantry organizations. But they don't, what they've set up doesn't comply with the current mandates under 1383.
So in essence, we really only have one tier one that doesn't have a plan in place this time, right?
We have one tier one, correct. And we have no recoverable food operation located within the city of winters.
So it just seems like our fair share might be recalculated based on the fact that there's really only one tier one generator that would be impacting the system, not two that are in the report.
Well, there, it's the capture, it's the, the additional capture of food that is potentially being disposed of. And it's ramping up the capacity of the food banks and the food pantries around the, around the county to take the extra food. So all of the information from all of the generators was combined, as well as all the capacity and all of the information that was available for all of the food pantries. That was also combined to be able to create a network. And there were some assumptions associated with how they would divvy up the costs.
And so this is a state mandated program, I know.
Correct.
But my understanding also is that no funding was also made available to cities to help implement this.
No, that's correct. And thank you. I made a note in the staff report. So cities are grappling with how to comply with these regulations. Yolo County's regional approach, I understand, is a bit unusual. But according to Cow Recycle, that means we're that much farther ahead than other jurisdictions. But it is considered an unfunded mandate by the state. What some cities are doing is they're considering, in order to comply with these regulations, a line item on the waste bills, a 1383 line item on the waste bill. So in order to add that line item on the bill would require negotiating with your waste hauler to include that in the billing. And then it would also require a Prop 218 process to increase the fees associated with waste services in order to receive that additional funding. At this point, because we don't know what the true cost will be to the city of winters, right now, the estimate and the maximum amount for year one would be 34,000 if we participate in this regional program. That number could go down to as low as 6,000, depending on grants that become available. And if we're successful, at that point, for just this portion of 1383, we could absorb $6,000. And we might even absorb the 26 and next year's budget. But depending, but we don't know what the other portion of 1383 will mean for us financially related to the organics procurement, which is also a huge portion of 1383. And so in the absence of understanding what the full impacts might be to the city's budget or to the community in general, at this point, I haven't made a recommendation how to fund this because I, I would like to see what our actual costs look like before making any recommendations associated with a new fee on the waste bill. We just don't know. And so my recommendation would be to take this one step at a time to make sure that we have all the information that we think we have before we make some decisions. But it is, it is financially impactful in many communities.
Thank you.
All right, councilmember Lauren?
So I, you know, my understanding is that 1383 was passed in 2016 with this, you know, really great idea of not feeding the landfill and feeding people. But that kind of umbrella, really good concept, took a while to be figured out by Cow Recycle. And Cow Recycle's plan, I think, rolled out in 2020. So there was a long time before cities knew what they were going to be facing. And, and now we suddenly have a deadline of, of 2022. And, and it is really kind of frustrating for everybody involved. And it is an unfunded liability or an unfunded mandate. And it is kind of Byzantine, but we still have to rise to meet the, the law. And I think the city managers, managers' approach of kind of doing, doing a small amount and doing just enough to take care of our two tier, our two, one of our tier one creators is really prudent. And I don't like how Byzantine and how laborious all this is. But I, I think that we have the best path forward.
Okay, thank you. Any other council comments before we go to public comment? I'll just make a couple of quick comments. And that is, I, I agree with Mayor Pro Tim. It's just super frustrating that once again, we're getting a mandate from the state for something that's, that's pretty costly for the, for the cities and the counties without, without any, any funding whatsoever, while the county or the state appears to be sitting on fat reserves. So it's, it's pretty frustrating to me. You know, I just, I, I don't like it. But I do think that the approach that staff has taken and the city manager's taken is the proper approach. And I think it's the, a, a good way forward, as mentioned by councilmember Lauren. I, I, I just think, you know, taking it in small steps here and seeing where it lands after the first year. Because I hate to jump right into another rate increase on, on people's individual bills, if we can help it at all. So that's my, my two cents. Shelley, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no raised hands.
Okay, I don't believe we've received any emails on this item.
I have no emails either.
Okay, with that said, then I think what we need to do is approve the, yes.
I asked another question or make one more comment before we move on. So I think, I mean, I think the, the plan, I'm, well, I'm in agreement with the plan that we have. I'm not in agreement of why we have to do it. But I think the problem is, is if we don't come up with a plan, we would be subject to fines for not having a plan and then be made to put a plan in place anyway. So it would be much more costly. So I believe that, you know, approving this plan and concept and approaching it as the city manager has outlined is the wise way to go. So with that said, I would make a motion unless councilmember Lauren has another comment prior to that.
Um, you know, Bill, I think you and I are in such alignment on this in every way. And I, I was just going to offer the motion also. And I, I'm not sure if it was the same motion, so have at it. You go ahead.
I was just, I would move that we receive and accept the edible food recovery capacity study and funding assessment, Yolo County report, and approve in concept with the expenditure of up to 34,622 to support city winners' participation in the proposed regional edible food recovery program.
I second your well said motion.
Are we back?
There you go.
Okay, everything went blank. Okay, where we ended is I believe Mayor Pro Tim Biase was about to make a motion.
I made the motion and councilmember Lauren seconded it.
Okay, with that said, we can do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anderson?
Hi.
Councilmember Lauren?
Hi.
Councilmember New?
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Biase?
Hi.
And Mayor Cowan?
Hi. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, now we're going to move on to item B, which is ordinance 2021-07, amending section 10.16.110 of the Winter's Municipal Code to restrict designated parking spaces and stalls in off-street parking facilities owned or operated by the city for the exclusive purchase, purpose of charging and parking a vehicle that is connected for electric charging purposes. Who's taking the lead on this one?
Chief Miller is, thank you.
Okay, Chief Miller?
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city manager, and members of the public. Staff has prepared for your review and consideration an ordinance to amend section 10.16.110 municipal code. Under that municipal code, it already allows the city council to designate certain off-street parking sites or locations for designated purposes. Under the vehicle code 22511, it allows local agencies or local jurisdictions to designate specific spaces for electric vehicle charging. Going back to city council meeting, I believe, a month, month and a half ago, Public Works Superintendent Eric Lucero presented to the council how we are installing several electric vehicle charging stations in the center, as well as behind the hotel and the city parking lot. These stations are going to be monitored by a smart technology that will charge at premium to people who park in the space too long hooked up to the charger. Obviously, a, a pretty obvious circumvention to that is just to not plug in the vehicle. And they wouldn't be charged that premium charge. So was my recommendation to just add subsection C to that municipal code to specifically address electrical vehicle charging stations, which would allow the police department to cite vehicles that are parked and not charging or non-electric vehicles that do park in space. Under the vehicle code and also under this ordinance, would also ultimately allow the removal of said vehicles by the police department if deemed necessary to clear up the space. Amending it, the, this one section was very convenient. Again, it fits very nicely. Also, there's a fine already established on the schedule of fines and penalties of $30. So we don't, you know, won't have to change our parking citations and simply just cite for that, that municipal code. With that, pretty simple. If you have any questions, I'm available for you.
Okay, so council have any questions for staff on this item? Okay, seeing none. Shelley, do we have any public comments on this item?
I have no raised hands and I have no written comments.
Okay, thank you. Okay, back to us. Would anybody like to make a motion on this item?
I'll move item B.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by councilmember Lauren and a second by councilmember New. You're muted, by the way, but I saw your hand go up. So Shelley, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lauren?
Hi.
Councilmember New?
Hi.
Council, or Mayor Pro Tim Biase?
Hi.
And Mayor Cowan?
Hi. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on to item C. This is a resentable notice of intent to withdraw from Yolo County Public Agency Risk Management Insurance Authority, better known as YC Permia. City manager?
Yes, thank you very much. So this is a procedural item. It is. It is a revocable notice of intent to withdraw from YC Permia, which has been our risk pool and insurance provider for many, many years. The City of Winters is one of the lead members of the risk pool. YC Permia is a little unusual in the sense that it is a risk pool that is based on geography rather than type of function or type of public agency. So it's available to any public agency within Yolo County, and it's comprised of cities, the counties, schooled, a school district, airports, cemeteries. And so it's a risk pool that covers any possible public agency within, within Yolo County. In recent years, YC Permia has experienced some rather significant, significant rate increases in large part due to the insurance that it is purchasing from other providers and other pools. But also, the formula for how premiums have been calculated has been adjusted in the last year. And the result of that calculation adjustment caused additional increases for Yolo County, the City of Winters, and a couple other agencies within YC Permia. So last, late last summer, Yolo County issued, submitted a similar letter indicating a revocable intent to withdraw from YC Permia, and they did so because, according to the YC Permia bylaws, in order to withdraw from YC Permia, you have to provide six months' notice, which must be received by December thirty-first and can't be effective until July first of the following fiscal year. In addition, what it means is, is that most risk pools will not provide any information about possible rates and, and participate in an underwriting process for potential new members without making sure that the current pool has been advised that a member might, might be leaving the pool. So it's a sort of a risk pool courtesy notice. So this is really a procedural item. It will allow us to seek quotes for other insurance through other pools. It looks as if our general liability premiums will go up by almost fifty percent for next fiscal year, in part because of insurance, but also count, the county will likely receive a, an exposure discount or a credit against their premium for general liability. Because what the county has learned as part of this evaluation process is that county, counties have lower exposure, lower loss experience than cities generally have. And so the county is desirous of staying within YC Permia, but only if they can receive some sort of reduction in their general liability coverage premium. And that reduction would then need to be spread across the remaining members in order to make up the pool resources that the actuarial studies indicate we should have on hand. So this merely just allows us to go through the same process to apply with other risk pools to see if we can have more competitive premium, more competitive rates, and if we might have more robust services. Whatever the result of that evaluation is, we'll bring back to the city council and ultimately, council will have the opportunity to decide whether or not we would like to remain within YC Permia or join another risk pool for risk and insurance purposes. So this is really just a formality that will allow us to seek other opportunities. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Questions from council?
No. Just to comment, I would just like to say, I think this is a wise way to go about this, so that we can at least submit this notice, get some prices on insurance from other risk pool, and see if we can save money or not. So I would think, you know, I thank the city manager for bringing this to our attention, possible way that, you know, to see if we can save some money, so I think it's a good move.
I totally agree. There's nothing wrong with a little price shopping once in a while, especially when, you know, we're looking at a possible fifty percent increase next year. We need to see what else is out there and make sure we're getting the best deal we can for winners. Shelley, do we have any public comment on this item?
I have no raised hands and no written comments.
Okay, thank you. Back to the council. If there's no further discussion or comments, would entertain a motion. Councilmember New.
New will move. I say that we approve the revocable notice of intent to withdraw from YC Permia.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilmember New and two fingers from Councilmember Lauren for a second. So we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Councilmember Lauren.
Hi.
Councilmember New.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Biazzi.
Hi.
Mayor Cowan.
Hi, motion carries unanimously. Thank you for your work on this, Kathleen. All right, moving on to item D, which is resolution twenty twenty-one dash ninety related to the city's street name list.
Our senior planner, Kirk Skierski, will present this item.
Okay, Kirk, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, council and public. Here tonight, before you, is a resolution adopting the City of Winters' street name list. And as part of this, uh, street name list, staff is also seeking direction on how to move forward with going about creating additional street names for use in the future. So a, a brief background relating to this item. In two thousand and five, around, kind of around the, the Winters Highlands subdivision era, both city staff and the council felt it was in the city's best interest to maintain control over naming of the creation of new streets. So at that time, council directed staff to form a committee, an ad hoc street naming committee, and develop a, a street name list. And that committee actually did develop an approved street name list. However, it was not formally adopted. And in present day, we are seeing development pick back up again. We're, we're expecting a few more projects to come through. And while the, the street name list before you tonight to be adopted is sufficient for some of the more, uh, more recent developments, developments that we expect to move forward in the upcoming year or so, the street name lists are sufficient for those developments, but there are larger projects that have been submitted and that staff has been corresponding with property owners. So we feel that addressing the street name list now would be beneficial in the long run. So staff is seeking direction, and that could be anywhere from the formation of a council ad hoc committee or something a little bit more informal where the staff would work directly with engaged residents. So just looking for direction on how to move forward with the street name list. With, with that, I'm available for any questions or additional comments or clarifications.
Okay, thank you, Kirk. Councilmember Lauren.
Yeah, I was under the impression in the past that there were only about five names left, left. But with this list, there's lots of names, plenty of names to go around for a while. So I would be interested in adopting the list and maybe kicking the can down the road on an ad hoc committee, because we have so many that are so serious right now and so much work to do. Let's move that to the middle of twenty twenty-two or later. That, that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Any other council comments? Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess the question that I have for clarification, we have quite a few names on that list that are not assigned yet, but I think it was described that they are temporarily or tentatively assigned to future developments, but nothing happens until those developments actually are built. So those names, in reality, aren't really assigned at all until they're built. So we do have a lot to choose from, and I, I agree with Councilmember Lauren's comment about, you know, adopting the list that we currently have. And then down the road, as we see that need arise, then we bring together. I mean, if we do in the future bring a committee together, I liked the, the recommendation of the informal staff-led committee with some of the involved members, especially the Winters Historical Society. It's been some of what's done in the past, so that would be my desire.
Okay, Councilmember Anderson, any thoughts?
Hey, I agree with Councilmember Biazzi. Jesse, we should not be in a big hurry to take this on.
Okay, thank you. I, I agree with both that, you know, let's adopt the, the list we currently have and, and, you know, we can look at adding more down the road. And I do agree with the Vice Mayor about, you know, the, the formation of the, the committee and definitely making sure we include the Historical Society, as has been done in the past. Councilmember New.
I just want to say that I agree with all the council members that have spoken so far, and I think that we should approve this and postpone changing the list at this time. So it's probably time we vote. We seem to be.
Well, yeah.
I just, I just, go ahead. I just wanted to make one more comment before we have a motion.
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you to our senior planner, senior planner Kirk Skierski for bringing all this information together for us and, you know, bringing this to light that there's been this list that was created back in two thousand and five, it never actually adopted. I think you did a good job digging up all the information, probably along with our city attorney, and did a good job putting it together. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And before we entertain a motion, Shelley, do we have any public comment about the street naming?
Yes, Kate Lattish has her hand up.
Okay, welcome, Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. Kate Lattish, four hundred, Morgan Street, number twenty-one. And I'll keep this brief, that I am fully supportive that Winters is able to bring forward our, our own ideas for street names, rather than have them brought by, by people who are doing the developments. It always seems surprising that, that development companies name our neighborhoods. And so I, I support the city being able to choose what street names are available. I salute that the city has a variety of heritage in the names in the list. And, but the names that have been used have kind of more of a variety of hea- of heritage than the unused names. And so that's probably not something that needs to be fixed tonight, but it's something that I think would be on the radar, because then as, as these names get, get used, it'd be good to just kind of continue to, to have neighborhoods with the names that reflect the Winters' really rich heritage. And that might be something that the Historical Society could, could be involved in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kate. Shelley, do we have anybody else?
I have no other raised hands and we have no written comments.
Okay, thank you. With that said, we'll entertain a motion.
Lauren will move the item. With adopting the resolution number twenty twenty-one dash ninety and approving the recommended street name list for use for city winters with future streets and not really forming a committee at this time, but having a city-led committee in the future.
All right, we have the motion by Councilmember Lauren and a second by Councilmember New. Shelley, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Councilmember Lauren.
Hi.
Then Councilmember New.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Biazzi.
Hi.
Mayor Cowan.
Hi, motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, Kirk, and Joanna, for your work on this. Thank you. And motion carried unanimously. Okay, we're going to move on to item E, which is resolution twenty twenty-one dash ninety-two, formally establishing the Hispanic Advisory Committee, appointing members for specified terms and transferring thirty-three grand from the city Hispanic Advisory Account to the Winters Community.
Corazon.
Corazon Foundation. Okay, will this start with?
I believe it'll start with Councilmember Lauren, yes.
I will be, well, I just want to say that Alviasio, Rosa Vasquez, and Rob Keel are here from Hack, LaTisia, Quirarte had a medical, a family medical emergency, and I'm going to recuse myself on this item. Call me up or text me when you want me to come back.
Okay, thank you. All right, then I think we'll go to City Manager to tell us about this.
Yes, thank you very much. So this resolution that is before you tonight, twenty twenty-one dash forty-two, dash ninety-two, is formally establishing the Hispanic Advisory Committee, which may seem a little odd, since this committee has been operating for fifteen years. So to some degree, this is a bit of a formality, at, at least in terms of formally establishing the, the committee. So back in June of twenty, two thousand and six, the city council adopted a resolution that actually formed the Hispanic Advisory Committee for a six-month period. And, and the purpose of the committee was to develop an outreach and a community, and a communications plan to the Spanish-speaking community to make sure that we were really a fully inclusive, inclusive community. And through the early years, there were members that were appointed for this initial outreach committee. However, the committee has been hugely successful. It's been very active. It's been operating for fifteen years with council support. So periodically, especially in the early years, the committee would come back with updates. They would have a work plan that the council considered. There were members that were appointed, but not necessarily for specific terms that have been managed the way our other standing committees have. And so they did have some more direct contact with the city council in its early years, up until two thousand and ten. And we have record in the council minutes of the communication and collaboration between the Hispanic Advisory Committee and the city council. And the city council has appointed a liaison to the Hispanic Advisory Committee through the years. So former mayor and councilmember Woody Friday, former councilmember and mayor Cecilia Aguirre Currie have been involved with the Hispanic Advisory Committee. And most recently, Councilmember Lauren has been a council liaison to the Hispanic Advisory Committee. So the Hispanic Advisory Committee through the years has coordinated programs of benefit to the Hispanic community, but also of benefit to the broader community. And they've done charitable contributions. And in order to fund their work, they created and developed the Carnitas Festival to be able to fundraise to support their activities. And so what's been a little bit unusual about the Hispanic Advisory Committees that in order to support their programming and their mission, which the council had, and the city has supported, they fundraised to help support their programs, and then those funds have been held and in an exclusive account for use by the committee. But those, but that, but the funds haven't been programmed in the city budget. So it's almost as if it's separate and apart, but it's sitting on the city's balance sheet, and the committee is programming those funds for the benefit of the community. So not unlike the Youth Day Committee that has become so successful, they were strongly encouraged to create their own nonprofit five oh one C three to be able to do their fundraising and do their community programming and to proceed with their philanthropic work. And so they've been working on that community foundation for about three years. And the foundation was officially formed back in, I think, late twenty twenty or maybe the winter of twenty twenty-one. And so now they have, the members of the Hispanic Advisory Committee have formed a community foundation called the Winters Community Corazon. And so that group exists separate and apart from the City of Winters and from the Hispanic Advisory Committee. So there's sort of two things that we're bringing before the city council. One, formally, officially establish the Hispanic Advisory Committee as a standing committee in action that council in the past has not taken. And then appoint members to the, to the committee. And there's a recommendation in the resolution that the committee has supported in terms of who would be appointed for, for the staggered two- and four-year terms for the initial formation, and that these members be appointed for terms like other standing committees. And as staff, we will manage those terms. And that they would, like the other standing and committees and working committees, develop an annual work plan that they would bring back and present to the city council. So the first part of tonight's item is really formalizing what has been in existence for fifteen years, but bringing them more into compliance with the norms of the Brown Act and standing committees. but bringing them more into compliance with the norms of the Brown Act and standing committees by creating these appointments and managing these terms. So that's sort of the first part of this item. The second part of the item is that there is $34,000, that $34,197 that the Hispanic Advisory Committee has raised through its, through the Carnitas Festivals and through the solicitation of donations that are sitting in the city's account. So in order for the new community foundation to proceed with some of the work that it would like to do, it's respectfully requesting that council authorize the transfer of $33,000 of these funds to the new community foundation so that they can continue with the work that they've been doing previously as Hack, but now as the foundation. So in conversations with Councilmember Lauren and with the Hack Hispanic Advisory Committee members to create some sort of dividing line between what is city, what is Hispanic Advisory Committee and what is foundation work? The clear, easy sort of logical line is, is that anything that is financially related, whether it's the fundraising activities through the Carnitas Festival, or it's the philanthropic work that the foundation would like to do. They fund some scholarships for kids going off to community college. They help support the munchkin camp program. They support the school district for some of the things that they're doing. Anything that's financially related would stay on the foundation side. Anything that's not financially related would stay on the Hispanic Advisory Committee side. So the immigration classes, the community survey in terms of what needs are, you know, the needs that are out there in the community and how to address those needs, providing some guidance with regard to translation and what should be translated and helping staff stay aware of how to approach communication and the dissemination of public information into the Spanish-speaking community. All of that would remain with the Hispanic Advisory Committee, which is consistent with their original mission and the mission that they've embraced for the last 15 years. So it's kind of a two-parter. It's formally creating the committee and appointing members with terms. And we as staff will help staff that committee to make sure they're complying with the Brown Act. And then secondarily, is considering and authorizing the transfer of $33,000 from the Hack account that the city holds to the new, the new foundation. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I believe there are some members of the Hispanic Advisory Committee that are here and present during the call as Councilmember Lauren mentioned.
Okay, thank you very much.
Our Assistant City Attorney Joanna Jen has a comment.
Okay, Joanna, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to state for the record that the reason why Councilmember Lauren recused herself was because she has an interest as a board member of the nonprofit Winters Community Corps. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any council comments or concerns before I open it up for public comment? And see if anybody on the Hispanic Advisory Committee would like to speak? Seeing none right now. Would anybody from the committee like to address the council on this? Give us your thoughts?
Yes, Rob Keel has his hand raised.
Okay, Rob, welcome.
Thank you. I hope you can hear me okay. I am up in the mountains right now and the connection isn't great.
We can.
Oh, great. So I am a, a member of HAC and have been in the Winters Community now for a year now. And I just want to say in, in support of this, that obviously the HAC has been around for 15 years doing great work. So the, the formal establishment should be a pretty easy move for the, the council. But the, the transfer of, of funds will benefit both the, the city itself as, as a governmental organization and the community. The, the city has benefited by getting this, this money off their books and, and freeing up the, the organization, the foundation to, to have a broader mission within the community. And then the city itself is going to get more services via tax deductible donations and, and kind of letting the, letting the foundation drive the, the financial aspect. So I just wanted to raise those points for the, the council members.
Okay, thank you for that and welcome to Winters. And thank you for getting involved with what's going on in Winters. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else that would like to speak?
Yes, Alba Cio.
Welcome, Al.
Oh, I believe he's muted.
Yep, you're muted.
Although it doesn't show muted. Yeah, we can't hear you, Al.
Now it shows me. There you go.
The adventures of technology. Where's the easy button? You just wanted to hit it.
Yeah.
Exactly.
You want to add your comments in the chat? Maybe that would work.
Uh, how's he?
There he is.
There you go.
Okay, good. Have to push the button twice. Anyways, good evening. Thank you for having us. Kind of an exciting point for both the Hispanic Advisory Committee and the Winters Corazon. And we've been working on this for more than three years, the nonprofit. We started writing the bylaws almost four years ago. So it's taken a lot of steps to get here. But we really feel that by opening up and becoming a, a foundation that works together with Hack, we can expand the kind of programs and the kind of philanthropy within the, the community at large, but specifically into Latino community. And sort of expand programs and hopefully raise more funds. And also be able to extend those funds because some, some of the things that we've been presented with over the years presented a problem because it just wouldn't be the correct place for a city to be spending money. But now as a foundation, we get a little more freedom to be able to sort of spend some of the money that we've spent. Well, I, I think you're all familiar with the Carnitas Festival. And it, it requires a great deal of work. Anyone who's worked on these big events in the community knows it's, it's, it's a big deal to, to put on a big party for lots of people. So we, we feel like we've, we've done our work, our due diligence and, and would like to be able to seed, seed the Corazon with the proceeds that we've earned over, over the past 15 years to, to move forward and to expand and to, to be able to bring our programs further out into the community. Are there any, any questions from anyone? For, you know, sort of the things we do or, or not?
I, I believe you've been involved since day one, correct, Al?
No, I'm not. I'm actually, I'm kind of a middleager. I've been involved about six years. But I believe Rosa is here. She's been involved from, from the beginning. Also, Laetitia Quirarte. Unfortunately, she had a medical emergency in her family this past weekend. And so she's not able to be here with us tonight. And, but, Tina, Tina Loudon's been involved with us over, over the past, I think, three years. Tina, is that correct? And then, I mean, our, our, our total group is probably numbers in 20-something numbers.
Great. Okay, thank you. Shelley, do we have any other hands raised for comment on the item?
Kate Lattish has her hand raised.
All right, welcome back, Kate.
Thank you, Mayor Kate Lattish, 400 Morgan Street, number 21. And I, and I want to start by thanking the members of Hispanic Advisory Committee and Winters Community Corazon for all of the work that they do and everything that they bring to this community. These, Hack has been a really vital part of, of our community since, since its founding and, and has really brought so much to it in so many different ways, both from community building, something like the, the Carnitas Festival to, to some of the different citizenship classes. I mean, there's, there's so much. And my sense is, is that by formalizing the Hispanic Advisory Committee within the city structure, that then that would be a way, it, it, it would make it so that, for example, I mean, if it, if it's an agendized meeting, that then people can find out about it through that way. And it would also be a way to, to form some different relationships within the city structure between Hispanic Advisory Committee and some of the different advisory bodies, for example. And, and, and for example, not that I am still excited about the street naming list, but that might be a, a great group to tap into when, when we get back to discussion about that. And so, so suffice to say, I'm, I'm grateful to Hispanic Advisory Committee and Winters Community Corazon and would be enthusiastic about council moving forward with this. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you. Shelley, do we have any other public comments?
I have no other raised hands and no written comments.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I definitely support this. I think the Hispanic Advisory Committee has done a lot of good work over the years in, in a lot of different areas. And they've supported a lot of different organizations and scholarships. And, and I just think they do a lot of good work. And I've, I've personally received comments from other community leaders outside of Winters, wondering how we managed to get our Hispanic, uh, community as involved as we have. And I think it's something for all of us to be pretty proud of, what we've been able to do here in Winters, thanks to the Hispanic Advisory Committee in that regard. So is there any other council comments or discussion before we entertain a motion?
It's Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I would just say I agree with what you've said already. And I think this is long overdue that we actually formalized this committee. They've done really great work over the years. I like the idea of separating the funding into, sending it into the nonprofits' hands. That takes some of the accounting part of it off of city staff and less of their time for that money. And the, the foundation can manage it and I'm sure will put it to very good use. I think it's a great idea to do this.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Alba Cia has his hand up again.
Oh, okay, Al.
Just, just to give everyone some, some, some bragging rights. Over the past year during the pandemic, I was the local coordinator for the Apoyolo Program, trying to keep immigrants housed and fed during the height of the pandemic. And out of that organization, the city, the, the, the community, the Latino community in Davis now wants to emulate Winters and form their own Hispanic Advisory Committee. And they're, they're working on that now. So, so that you all know, our, our big neighbor to the east there trying to copy something we've done. So just some bragging rights.
There you go. I've always said Davis could learn a thing or two from us. Thank you for that, Al.
Sure.
All right, if there's no further comment, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll move this. I move that we adopt resolution 2021 formally establishing the Hispanic Advisory Committee, appointing members and transferring $33,000 from the city Hispanic Advisory Account to the Winters Community Corazon Foundation.
Hey, thank you. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember New and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Biase. Shelley, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Councilmember New.
Hi.
Mayor Pro Tim Biase.
Hi.
Mayor Cowan.
Hi. Motion carries for zero with one abstaining due to conflict. All right, thank you, everybody. And congratulations to Hispanic Advisory Committee and looking forward to the future and all your good work. Thank you. All right. You bet. All right, now we're going to move on. We're going to have an item F, which was our former item H on the consent calendar. So we'll go back as asked for by the Mayor Pro Tim about the council members' compensation. Mayor Pro Tim?
Yeah, I think the city attorney has a comment.
Yep, Joanna, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was wondering if Councilmember Lauren will be rejoining.
Oh, yeah, we got to get her back.
We can wait, we can wait.
Yep, yes.
I, I've texted her, so I'm hopeful she zooms right back in. Oh, she says she's having trouble. Hold on a second. And in this lull, I'm listening to some very steady rain outside our very thin windows.
Hey.
And here comes Councilmember Lauren.
Okay, welcome back.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can.
It would, it wouldn't go to my computer, so I'm on my phone.
Okay, well, we're, we're moving on to the previous consent calendar item about the council compensation. And Mayor Pro Tim asked to move this down to a discussion item. So that's where we're at. So Bill, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Why I asked for this to be moved is the, we have the discussion at the last meeting. I was not in favor of it. And generally, when we have items on the consent calendar, we approve all those, you know, unanimously. So I wanted to be on record that we voted on this and I am able to vote in the same manner as what I voted at the previous ones, previous meeting, based on the same, same reasons I stated, that I just, I feel uncomfortable approving a raise for ourselves. With that, I'd like to see it go to a vote of the public. I know that would be costly, but I just was a little bit uncomfortable approving a raise for ourselves. And then, so I wanted to move it to a discussion item so that we could have that both separately from the consent items.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there any other council comments or input on that?
Um, can I make a comment? I, I don't know how to raise my hand on my phone.
Absolutely, go ahead.
I, you know, I, I really respect that when Bill feels strongly about something, he feels strongly about it. And I really do respect that. And I'm glad that we're all, you know, colleagues on council together. I wasn't sure if he could have abstained from it, but maybe he could still, you know, he, he can vote however he wants to vote. I still support it. I still think it's best for equity to have $300, I think would attract people running for office. That, that might not be middle-class with big retirements that, that aren't inconvenienced by the time allotment. I think it might be attractive for younger people in our community. And, and I think that the diversity of those different voices would be good to have. So I still support it. And those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other council comments, then we'll ask Shelley if there's any public comment.
Tina Loudon.
Okay, welcome, Tina.
Oh, sorry. You, you can see my hair. Oh, there I am. Okay. I, I too support this measure of $300 a month. The Winter Express said that I, I really want $500 a month, but, you know, little steps, little steps. Again, you guys do. Little steps, little steps. Again, you guys do so, so much. You travel all over the place and as a, as a member of the community, I really appreciate. All the hard work the city council does and you guys are phenomenal. Two claps. Oh, that was four. Never mind. I'm a senior. What the heck?
All right, you forgot about the other two already anyway. Thank you, Tina. Shelley, do we have any other comments?
I have Kate Lattish.
Welcome back, Kate.
Thank you, Mayor. Kate Lattish, four hundred Morgan Street, number twenty-one. And, and so I'll, I'll just, I'll echo the support that I voiced. Last time that this came to, to council. I, I think increasing from one fifty to, to. Three hundred, which is not really a towering amount for the amount of work that, that you all do that as. As a resident of Winters and in, in Votorin Winters, I, I feel very comfortable. Both with that amount and with the process by which council would be increasing it. And. I, I both, I appreciate so much the discussion about this in terms of equity. And also the discussion about, about the process by it and, and, and. And, and that I, that I hear, I hear what everybody's saying, including, including Mayor Protim Biazzi about, about discomfort about. About an elected official voting, voting for, for a raise. My understanding is, is that this would be voting, voting for a raise for future councils, essentially. That it would not be the sitting council voting for a raise for. The sitting council. And, and so that increases my, my comfort. With it, that this would be for, I believe, for after the next, the next election. So.
That is correct. For after the next election where three of us, three of our seats are open. So. Potentially three, three new council members and it would take effect after that, I believe.
That this, this might, might increase. Based on the, the discussion last time, it sounds like we have three council members who, who are not clamoring to. Stay on for long extra. And that this might, increasing the, the pay might, might increase. Interest in the, in the community so that we continue to have a full and robust and very active council the way that this council is. So. Thank you again for all of the work that you all do.
Thank you, Kate. Shelley, is there any other? Commenters?
I have no other raised hands and no written comment.
Okay, then we can entertain a motion.
I would have, be happy to move the item.
Okay. Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by council member Lauren and a second by council member New. Shelley, can you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Anderson.
Hi.
Councilmember Lauren.
Hi.
Councilmember New.
Hi.
Mayor Protim Biazzi.
No.
Council, Mayor Cowan.
Hi. Motion carries four one. Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, we're going to move on to the city manager's report. Kathleen, what's new?
Well, the Friday update is full of all the tidbits from City Hall, but what I did want to take a moment tonight to do. Is to recognize Shelley Gunby because this won't be her last council meeting, but will be probably one of the last council meetings. Because starting mid-January, she leaves for vacation and will essentially be on vacation until she formally retires. And so. We will have an opportunity in, in March to recognize Shelley officially. She and I have had a little conversation about kind of what she's thinking. So we're not done with Shelley, thank goodness, because I did want to recognize her for being. Really a truly an amazing partner for me since I arrived a year ago. But more importantly, for twenty-five years. She has dedicated her professional career here on behalf of the community for winners. And she has worked very, very hard, very, very diligently. She's a rule follower, which I happen to really like. We're both compliance oriented. And she has served admirably for all the councils that have come before and on behalf of the community. So I really did want to recognize Shelley Gunby for all of her hard work. We're going to miss her. I know she's a phone call and a text away for a couple of months, so I'll have time to wean myself from. Amazing support and partnership. And we'll see her again in March. And I think she has one more item that's going to come back before the city council. But she's essentially a short timer right now. She's thrown everything out the window from her office. It's starting to look empty. The quilts are coming down and it's going to be a really bizarre place for all of us. When she departs on her vacation in the mid-January. So I did want to recognize her publicly.
Thank you for that. Yes, Shelley, we will definitely miss you. Winters will miss you. You've. Done so much. Taking care of our finances for so many years. So we all definitely appreciate all your hard work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, council member New.
I just want to stick my. Comments in here also. It's, it's been a pleasure, Shelley. Thank you for your hard work. And if I. I, I have to give you a lot of credit for putting up with the questions that I ask and. And sometimes asking them more than once because I didn't understand the answer the first time. But you held on, you stayed in there and you did a great job. I, I really appreciate all your good work. Thank you.
Either that or you wanted a different answer.
And she's a rule follower. She was sticking with the same.
Mayor Protim.
Yeah, I just wanted to express my thanks to Shelley also. She's done a great job managing all of our financial. Transactions that we have through the city, even though we are a small city, there's a lot that goes on. There's a lot of regulations we have to comply with. And somebody really has to stay on top of everything to be able to do that. And Shelley has done that over the years. We already know how hard it is to replace her. We tried to recruit somebody and, and we didn't find anybody in the first go around, so we're having to try again. So. Shelley, thank you so much for all that you do.
Yep, and there's a huge stacks of, stack of plaques at City Hall. Financial achievements that we wouldn't have if it wasn't for Shelley's hard work. So. Yes, thank, thank you so much for that. And with, and with that, if there's.
We have council member Lauren who has raised her hand.
Okay, go ahead.
I just, I, I just want to echo all the sentiments of my colleagues and say that you, you have studied the, the big ship of winners for a very, very long time. But I personally want to thank you for taking all the time to show me sewing techniques and be patient with me. When I come in and go, look what I did. And you're like, mm, okay, really good, but. And, and, and I, and I have just taken each one of those to heart and. Especially going to Pierre's comment about those packets of cappers, just to going over it and. And when I look cross-eyed, you saying, okay, we're going to just go over this part again. I, I, I can't thank you enough. You're irreplaceable. Thank you.
So we will have a formal opportunity to recognize Shelley, but I felt it was fitting tonight since this is really her last official council meeting. The next one she'll be zooming in from some porch or swing someplace, just to send her last item forward. And I'll share with you any plans for a little shindig or get together.
All right, well, then we're going to close the last city council meeting for the city of Winters. At eight ten PM. I'm sure it's multiple hours before Davis's meeting will close. And we'll see you all next year. Goodbye, everybody. Good night.
Bye.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.